... here present, and I will call the February 17th, 2015, meeting of the Board of Education to order. We have a special guest with us this evening, Lydia Barker, a fifth grade student at Greenbrier Elementary School, who is going to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Lydia, I think you brought some special guests with you this evening. Would you like to introduce all of them to us, please?
I brought my parents, my sisters, Ms. Gracie Price.
Can everyone wave? Thank you.
And my grandpa and grandma Mary.
All right, and I think you have a member of the school with you.
And Gracie Price.
Very good, welcome. I also understand that you had a very special way of preparing for this evening. Would you like to share that with us?
I saw a video on Friday of the board meeting.
Did you watch just the first part?
I watched it. I watched until the girl was done.
Smart, good choice, excellent. Would you tell us something about your school, what you like to do?
I like this subject at school, it's math, and I, my hobbies when I'm out of school is drawing, running, and riding bikes.
Excellent. If you could change one thing in your school, what would that be?
It would be nothing, because I think the school is already great how it is right now.
And we didn't pay you to say that, right? Okay, good. Any of my colleagues have questions for Lydia? Thank you, Lydia, I appreciate it so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on, I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as recommended by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? Calling the question, all those in favor of Dr. Harding's motion? Thank you, seven zero. Moving on to the minutes, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, Madam President, I move for the acceptance and approval of the minutes of the work session for Tuesday, February 3rd, for the closed session for that same date, and for the business meeting also for that date, Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour, any discussion on the minutes? Calling the question, all those in favor? Thank you, seven zero. To public comment, we do have someone who has signed up to speak, a Mr. Edgar Klein, Jr. Would you please come forward? You can have a seat at the table if you'd like.
Thank you to the Board of Education for inviting me up to speak.
Could you move the mic up just a little bit?
Is this a little better?
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks for inviting me up to speak. I come both as a taxpayer and as a business entity established here in the county. I saw an article in the paper about the computers that are being discussed among the Board of Education for consideration for all the students in the county. And I'm not here to give an opinion of for or against, I just want to give some thoughts to consider as you, as a board, consider these things. I'm not sure what the cost that was quoted in the paper covers or does not cover, but I have worked in government for 28 years for large-scale government projects, Department of Education for a number of years in Washington DC being one of them. And a few things that I've learned to consider, and if you've already done these, I apologize. One of the things with the large number of computers to consider will be the logistics, distribution, both distributing the units, getting them back when they need to be repaired, those sorts of things, what kind of manpower that's going to take, what kind of systems it's going to take and support, what kind of help desk is going to be needed when students who are unfamiliar maybe with the equipment need additional help. That's a lot of computers, and I can imagine as they're being distributed first, there could be a large help desk need, at least at the beginning, even in waves as this goes out. If the students are going to be doing any of the homework at home and they need to do research from home, some of them may have Internet, some may not, what thought has been put into that, and how can that be addressed? Additionally, at home, if they need to print, or if they just need something safely to carry the units in, like cases, are those things being considered? I'm not looking for answers back, I'm just giving ideas here. Infrastructure in the school system, when these units are at the school system, what additional workload would once fully implement, 22,000 new units put on the networking alone and other types of infrastructure requirements? Does the cost include things like broken, lost, or stolen units? And if not, is there an insurance policy? What kinds of things, how's that being considered? Knowing how Apple does updates to its equipment, I'm thinking in my head that's 22,000 iTunes accounts, unless Apple or whoever's going to be supplying the equipment has a way to mass-update and lock these things down and do updates in a different way, much the way PCs, Windows PCs, can be done. So that's a question in my mind from a technical guy's perspective. Let's see, and have we looked at, and I'm sure we have, but it's just a question, both school systems that have successfully implemented such a program and those that have not, that have actually reverted away from such a program, not to, for or against, but to get lessons learned so that we're ahead of the curve on this. So those are just the kinds of questions that I wanted to bring forth from my knowledge of working in this kind of environment for 28 years.
And I appreciate, Mr. Klein, you're coming to share that checklist, and several of those items we discussed earlier this morning at a work session on this, and I know our superintendent and staff have been doing their due diligence for some time, but a great checklist. Any of my colleagues have any follow-up questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe we have another gentleman who has signed up, Mr. Devine? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, coming to the school board. My name's James Devine, Post Office Box 2217, Hagerstown, Maryland. First, I'd like to address the school cameras.
Can you bring the mic back to your?
Am I speaking loud enough?
Well, the mic will help, sir. Can you bring the mic to you?
First off, I'd like, more?
There you go. There, it moved, thank you.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
You don't mind if I keep my hat on, my bald head gets cold. First, I'd like to speak about the cameras on school buses. I find them lacking on a lot of the school buses, even ones that are privately owned. Now, I have a dash cam, and it's got two cameras on it, one faces forward, one faces back, or you can put them where you want them, side mirrors, whatever, about $150. You know, why wouldn't the school board invest in something like this, even for their own vehicles out there? These are like insurance policies. They have, they have like a collision indicator on them. If a vehicle's in a collision, it'll lock those frames in. And, you know, from what I hear about school buses being passed sometimes, these things would be great to have them, you know, because then, you know, the school bus driver wouldn't be there trying to write a number down or, you know, take actions, you know, $150. Shoot, you buy a dozen of them, they probably sell them to you for a hundred, you know? But for your own vehicle, other vehicles out there, they would be ideal, because then it would, if there's any accidents or things that the board's vehicles would be involved in, there would be recordings of it, you know, and just, this is like an insurance policy. You know, why the school board don't have them, I just don't understand, you know? For this type of price, you know, and it's on a loop recording that records for half a day, day at a time. So actually, actually, something like that, I think, would be good for the school board. The second issue I'd like to address is the speed cameras. Now, I think I went to, if I offend anybody for being here, the commissioners, I went to commissioners, they told me to come down here and talk to you, so if you have anything to say, blame them for sending me down here.
Thank you for that tip.
But the cameras, the speed cameras, now, Mr. Reible said there was one in front of Besters, and I seen one on the other side of the street, but I swear I can't find that one in front of Besters, you know? And it's not only that, a lot of the schoolchildren go up around Marsh Run, and they come out on Frederick Street. Who is the one individual that's in charge of all the speed cameras? That's a question.
The sheriff's office. We're not.
I mean, who evaluates where they go?
Sheriff's office.
Okay, okay, how about the Downsfield Pike back here, where all the kids come out from back South High? There's no camera back there. Who determines, I mean, is, do you give them guidelines on where they, where they should go? I mean, I mean, you're telling me who installs them, aren't you? Or who sets up the arrangement?
I think the sheriff's office is a contractor, but we don't set up any agreements with them as to where they put them. They put them where they-
That's what I want to know, why don't you have somebody that is designated to look at the schools to figure out where they should or shouldn't go? You know, VOTEC Center's the same way, you go up along Oak Ridge, a lot of students coming out of there, a lot of people speeding by there, there's no speed camera there. Downsfield Pike back behind South High, you don't see no speed camera back there. You look at the other schools around this area, and this isn't for protection of the children, you know? And you're telling me that there's no individual that has the authority or had the overview to say, "We need a camera here and here and here"? You're telling me, well, once the sheriff's department told, he'll do it. But who's, I mean, who's the individual, the single individual that's making that decision?
The city of Hagerstown, does our city of schools-
Well, I know it's no one, I know it's no, I know it's no one here at the school board, I do know this, that if I were to call the sheriff's office or the police department and say, "We think one should be there," I think they would review that and look at doing it, but it's not a function of the school system other than perhaps to advise. We don't have a position dedicated to it, I would imagine that responsibility would fall to me.
Well, that's my question, why don't you?
I don't, I don't see the same need that you do in some of these thoroughfares, but...
Mr. Devine, we appreciate your, any other questions or comments you might have for this evening?
Well, is there a time limit on when I can speak?
There is, yes, sir.
How long is it?
We have three minutes, and you've exceeded, but-
I'm over the three minutes.
Yes, sir, but we're certainly welcome if you have a third question or comment.
So I have to come back in order to put in the rest of my comments, huh?
You can certainly send them, submit them to us, email and writing, you can call any of us, you can call staff.
Well, there's just, there's just another just side comment, you know, it's about the election, and, you know, first thing I think the governor does is hyper-politics as the school board does, or elected school members do, you know, they tell the voters that they do this and do that, and, you know, no child left behind, and, you know, it's, are you really here for the children, or are you here for yourself? You know? It's, and like I said, the governor comes in and he says, "Well, I'm going to slash school boards," and I didn't read the article last Sunday, paper, glanced at it, but, you know, the funding, to cut the funding, one of the first things he does cut fundings for the school is ridiculous, or educational, you know, values in the state of Maryland is just total ridiculous. You know, taxes are just part of the evils of government. I know, I know they badmouth Malley about taxes, but you have to have taxes to pay for your services, you know, and if you don't have the taxes, then you don't get the service. It's like West Virginia, I'll take West Virginia as an example. But it's just, it's just the partisan, you know, not only, not only in the school board, you know, the commissioners, and it looks like the governor's office now, but, you know, you can't go out to the voters and promise them this and that, you know, just to tell them what they want to hear in order to get a seat, in order to satisfy your own, I guess, ego.
I appreciate it, Mr. Devine. We actually had another work session this morning about our budget and had a discussion about how we're going to be filling some of those gaps, so I appreciate you.
Well, it's what, I think it's what Early did when he was governor, and, you know, he says, "Well, I don't raise tax, but I'll shift everything onto the local government in order for them to take care of it." But still, the local government has to go back to its individual citizens and increase, you know, like Pennsylvania, they have a regular school tax, I think, you know, set up, but, you know, it's, it's just ridiculous that, you know, when I see, you know, elected officials, you know, telling people, I guess, if you tell a lie long enough, people tend to believe it, you know, but-
Mr. Devine, let me ask-
So when's your next meeting?
Appreciate it, we meet the first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Okay.
Any of my colleagues have any comments, questions?
I guess I have to come back to comments.
Mr. Devine, just so you know, the speed camera that's in front of Besters is slightly north of the, there's a building that has-
I think it's on the other side of the street, though. Do these cameras catch it both ways?
No.
You can't catch it, it only catches one way of traffic.
It only catches you going away, as you drive north, it catches you as you go away, and it's just a little bit north of the building that sells the monuments, right there, it's kind of off on the left-hand side across the street, and the other one's on Memorial, just by the center.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, there's none in front of Besters, none right directly in front of the school. There's one across the street, then you're saying it only catches traffic one way, which I believe it does. You know, and the one on Memorial-
I know that one works.
Oh, yeah, but-
Personal experience, I know that one works.
Me too.
Is that for the dead people?
Got me, I'm not dead.
Thank you, Mr. Devine, appreciate it. Have a good evening. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to share with us this evening? Okay, any of my colleagues have any response to the previous public comments? All right, we have no unfinished business, so we're moving directly into new business and the consent agenda, Mrs. Freeman.
Good evening, President Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. I have three procurement action items on your agenda this evening. I'm going to run through them pretty quickly, and I'm sure you'll have an opportunity for questions. The first item is bid 2014-34 On Call Tree Pruning and Associated Services. The board approved this contract about last year at this time, and the contract included renewal options for up to three additional one-year periods. This recommendation is to move forward and renew the contract through February of 2016. Again, this is an indefinite quantities-type contract in that Washington County Public Schools is not obligated to make any purchases under the contract, but wants to establish a contract in the event that we do need to make purchases from these two pre-approved vendors at these pre-approved unit rates. The services have been satisfactory, and as such, the committee is recommending to renew prices from antedum tree services and carbaugh tree services that are included in your packet this evening for the next year, allowing us to utilize that contract for, quote, "solicitations" for these types of services. The second bid on the agenda is a boiler replacement at Smithsburg Elementary School. We had a pre-bid at the school on January 23rd, received three bids, which we received here at the Center for Education Services, and I opened on February 5th. This bid will replace the existing boilers, which have performed beyond their normal life cycle, according to our facilities folks. Both boilers will be replaced, and in the objective being to increase efficiencies and ensure performance and maintain a comfortable environment for the students at Smithsburg Elementary School. Substantial completion of the project is by August 7th of 2015, and the bid does include minority business enterprise participation procedures, which our recommended contractor is proposing to meet. The bid is recommended to be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, M&amp;E Sales of Hanover, Maryland, at a total cost of $216, $861. Third item on the agenda is a purchase of 98 notebook computers. Staff is requesting to purchase 98 MacBook Air notebook computers to be distributed to school principals, assistant principals, coordinators, and administrators throughout the district, who will use them in the performance of observation and evaluations of our teachers. This purchase is made possible through a grant from the state of Maryland to assist local school systems participating in the state's Race to the Top program for personnel preparation and support associated with evaluation systems. That's my three bids this evening for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Requiring a motion to approve these bids and quotations?
Madam President, I move to approve the bid's quotation for on-call tree pruning and associated services, renewal to antedum tree service and carbaugh tree services at unit prices, a boiler replacement at Smithsburg Elementary School to M&amp;E Sales of Hanover, Maryland at $216,861, and the purchase of 98 notebook computers for school administrators to Apple Incorporated at $99,385.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings, that requires a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour, discussion? Yes, sir?
If you don't mind, just a quick question, Lisa, and I don't remember last year. I know this is a continuation with the tree pruning and the other services that go along with it, and I look at the unit prices, and there's some significant difference between one, you know, one and the other, I mean, significant differences for similar services. Did we just, were these the only companies that bid last year, or?
No, we had four bids. These were the two lowest on the unit price basis that we evaluated the bids from.
They were lowest?
Yes. I will say that we do get competition for specific projects that come up, but for, as you can see from some of the prices, it's clear that carbaughs is a little more expensive or a little less expensive on certain tasks that we would ask them to do. The prices that are identified in the lower half of that schedule, those are flat rates. In other words, there's no labor that rolls into those. But for most projects, I've encouraged our facilities, maintenance folks, to get competition from both companies. In any single order over $25,000, I would bring it back to the board for your approval.
And how many more years do we have before our ability to renew runs out?
Well, the contract had three renewal options in it, we can, we don't have to exercise those, that's at the board's discretion.
Correct, I understand. But this is the second of the first, or second of the three?
This is the first renewal, the second year, and these, both companies are holding prices through February of 16.
Okay.
And we did have competition, we had four, you know, complete bids when we looked at this last year.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Additional questions for Mrs. Freeman? Okay, the question is on Dr. Harding's motion, all those in favor? None opposed, seven zero. Very good, thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Next action item is the first reading of proposed changes to policy DKA payroll procedures. Mr. South, Mr. Trotta, and Mrs. Fisher will lead the discussion.
Good evening. The accounting department conducted a review of policy DKA, and based upon that review, it recommended to the policy committee that this policy be streamlined and updated. Much of the detailed information regarding the processing of payroll that now appears in the policy will be transferred to an administrative regulation. The policy committee is requesting the approval of the first reading of the proposed changes to this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, a motion, please.
Madam President, I move for, sorry, Jackie, for approval of first read of proposed changes to policy DKA payroll procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, discussion? Questions?
I'll just say, I think it's straightforward, we've cleaned up a lot of language that wasn't necessary, and the details will be in the regulations.
Very good. Seeing no further discussion, it's, the motion is on Mr. Reidenhour's, the question is on Mr. Reidenhour's motion, all those in favor? None opposed, seven zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the naming of West City Elementary School, and the discussion will be led by the board, and there's a couple ways I think we could approach the motion, we can, someone can offer a motion with a name attached to it, and see if that gains majority support, or the motion could say that we would go down the list of the five names offered, and we will go down that list until we meet, find a majority for that name. So to start the discussion, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Jonathan Hager Elementary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gesford, second by Mr. Reidenhour, discussion?
If I might-
Absolutely.
My reason for seconding this particular name, it's simple, is really kind of simple, I mean, three of the five basically pointed to or in some way were associated with Jonathan Hager. And for that reason, I believe, you know, in honor of his efforts, obviously in establishing the community of Hagerstown, that we just go full-blown and honor the man himself, instead of beating around the bush, so to speak. So, you know, it's rightly time.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Reidenhour, also, I believe, other than the Hager House in City Park, I don't believe there is anything in Hagerstown named for Jonathan Hager, so because of that, I think it's a good choice, and I agree, it's, you know, if three of them refer to Jonathan Hager, then it's suggesting that most people were, did have him in mind.
Thank you, and Mr. Gesford, you made the motion, I should have recognized you first, but would you have comments?
I don't, I just think that's a good name for the town, to honor having an elementary school.
Further comments?
I won't repeat what's been said, but I largely feel the same way. Before we vote, though, I do want to thank particularly all the students who were involved in this process. I know many students developed surveys, went and, oh, you've got it here. I'll let you, I'll let you cover.
No, no, I was just going to show it to you if you were.
They did a survey that had 170-some responses, and Spring House, Jonathan Hager, Hager's Crossing, all were clearly sort of the favorites. So thank those students that, was it Conicagee? Is that right? Who?
Mr. Pinkham.
See, I should have let, I should have let you do it. Thanks to Mr. Pinkham and all the students and staff at that school who helped get those students involved in this. It's taking something we're doing here and making it a learning opportunity for kids. And I think that's what, that's what great educators do, and clearly, they took this opportunity to teach the kids some things about civic engagement. So I want to thank them, everybody else involved in the process, and I'll be glad to support Jonathan Hager as the name of the new school.
And just to add on to that, there were 170 responses, which I thought was a great participation rate. And in the ranking that the students, they actually supported Spring House Elementary as number one, but very close second was Jonathan Hager. So I think we're, will make a large percentage of those students happy as well, so. Any final comments or questions? The question is on Mr. Gessford's motion to have Jonathan Hager Elementary as the school name for our new school. All those in favor? None opposed, seven zero. We now have a new name. Thank you. Mr. South, I believe you're next. We have the consideration for the second quarter FY 2015 budget adjustments. And Mr. Gessford is chair. You're welcome to add any comments you so choose.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Mr. South.
Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board, you did have the requested second quarter budget adjustments in your packet over the weekend, and I trust that each of you have had an opportunity to review them. I would just like to go over several of the requested adjustments in detail and bring them to your attention, and also for the, for the folks that may be listening in via television. First of all, on line one, the revenue line, we're requesting an increase of $241,500. This reflects the increased state revenue participation for additional non-public placements. And we'll discuss the increased costs shown below on line seven when we get down there. Line two, administration, you'll see there we're requesting a decrease in that budget of $1,141,000. That is related to the lower-than-expected cost of our back office software. That is the Tyler system that we're implementing at this particular time. Line five, instructional textbooks and supplies, we're increasing that line by $1.1 million, and that is to reflect the cost of the Stride Academy program at about $230,000, and additional classroom technology for park assessments at approximately $750,000. Special education down on line seven, you'll see there we're requesting an increase of This relates to an item that we talked about this morning in our, in our budget seminar, and it is the significantly higher-than-expected private placement volume that we've been experiencing of late. Line nine, student transportation services, we are requesting a reduction of $222,000. That is related to the lower cost of diesel fuel at this particular time. We've already experienced a savings of approximately $100,000, plus savings generated by the transfer of several contract bus routes to system-operated routes. Line 10, maintenance of plant, we're requesting an increase there of $750,000. And that, what we're doing there is returning the unused portion of the Bester Elementary allocation to the maintenance budget. We did discuss this also this morning. As you recall, we put, the board put $1.4 million over three years into the Bester project from the maintenance budget. And this year, we'd like to put that back. We're not going to need that $380,000 this year. That project has, is very near being closed out, and we are confident that we're not going to need that $380,000. We're also putting additional funds in there to provide additional work against the maintenance backlog, which was, has been created over the past couple of years. Capital outlay on line 11, there you see we're just, that's where that Bester Elementary project funding originates. That's where we had put it into the budget. We need to move that up into line 10 in order to, to use it in the maintenance of plant area. Finally, down on line 12, fixed charges, we're requesting an increase of $1,088,000 there, excuse me, a reduction of $1,088,000 there. That's savings from the insurance premium holiday that the board offered to employees prior to the winter break. All that brings us down to an increase in fund balance of $719,912. Now, as part of the recommendation, staff and the superintendent are recommending that the board commit $500,000 of that $719,000 to increase, to increase the amount that's already been committed to the academic hub. As you recall, the board committed $2 million previously to the academic hub. We do believe that that project is going to come in closer to the $4 million mark, and this would get us $500,000 closer to what's going to be needed for the academic hub. That would leave the undesignated fund balance increase at $219,912 as a result of the second quarter budget adjustments. All that being said, we'd be glad to, I'd be glad to address any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. South. Requesting a motion to move to approve the FY 2015 second quarter budget adjustments, including that $500,000 of the fund balance would be committed to the academic hub. That is the motion I'm requesting.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the second quarter budget adjustments and the designation of $500,000 from the uncommitted fund balance to the committed fund balance dedicated to the downtown educational hub.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. A second? Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Questions?
What is the current balance in the fund balance? The balance in the fund balance?
$2 million.
Big pardon?
Isn't it $2 million? Are you second?
Are you?
Total, in the fund?
Total?
Unencumbered.
Around $8 million. I don't want the exact number.
Thank you. That's not, that's, some of that's encumbered, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussions? Calling for Dr. Harding's motion. All those in favor? Okay, none opposed, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. South.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Wilcox, up to your update?
I don't have one tonight, other than to clarify a position, and I just mentioned, I thought you were asking the question of how much had been designated right now for the fund balance towards the academic hub. That's why I said $2 million. But, thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Very good. Mrs. Francisco's moving up. Personnel is next.
Oh, you do have a speaking part.
This is Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed earlier this afternoon in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Francisco. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the acceptance of the staff changes outlined earlier today.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any discussion? All those in favor, personnel recommendations. None opposed, seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On to reports to the board. We will start with curriculum and instruction. Mrs. Harshman?
Curriculum and instruction has not met since the beginning of the year. We will be meeting February 24th at 12 o'clock in the board conference room, and we are hoping to have a presentation on the Apex program.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, facilities?
The facilities committee will meet on Tuesday, February 24th at 12 noon in Dr. Michael's conference room, and the agenda will be posted.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford, finance?
Yes, there will be no finance meeting this month. We will adjourn next month.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Fisher, policy and development?
Our last meeting was reported on at the February 3rd, business meeting, and we will be meeting again on the 24th at 9:00 a.m. in the board conference room.
Okay. That leaves human resources. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes. Madam President, the human resources committee will not meet this month. We will reconvene in March.
Very good, thank you. Any MAEB reports at this point, Mrs. Harshman?
The MAEB Conference Planning Committee met on Friday, the 13th, and we put together some possibilities for very interesting workshops and hot topics for consideration. And this is for our conference in the, at the beginning of October in Ocean City, Maryland, and hopefully, all board members throughout the state will be able to attend.
All right. We're going to move on to the Legislative Response Team. Mr. Trotta, if you'd like to come up in case we need some additional support there. Dr. Harding, if you wanted to address some of your testimony?
Sure, I'll just kick off with two. I was in Annapolis twice within the last two weeks, both to testify on the superintendent contract bill. The Senate hearing on that bill was on February 4th. It was a good discussion, a lot of back and forth between, well, mostly myself and members of the committee, but it's hard to exactly know how, if you, how people will vote when it comes down to it, but it seemed like we had a solid majority who seemed to think that, that they would, at least I came away with the impression thinking that they would vote in our favor. I went to the House hearing on February 12th, that's House Bill 191, I believe. That was pretty much the opposite. I spoke for three minutes, nobody asked a question, and I came home. So, I think that's because it was at the end of about a three and a half, three and a half hours' worth of hearings, which I sat through, saw John Woolums do his job and testify on a few bills, and it was a very engaged committee. I think by the end of the day, though, they were tired, and I'm hoping the fact that there were no questions means that they're all willing to vote the way I asked them to. So that's my update on that portion of our agenda.
So does that mean we should all try to get before a committee at the end of the day?
That's a good question. I know Artith is working very hard as well. She managed to meet with the chair of the Ways and Means Committee before our hearing. She went back and met with a number of the senators who were on that committee after the hearing, so she's been, she's been working hard to move our, move our agenda forward.
Thank you. Earlier today, my colleagues all received a to-list that we're going to use as a way of updating legislation that we're watching, and our three pieces of legislation that are working their way through the legislative system. Most recently, on the list, you'll notice that the Washington County Board of Education Financing Authority bill has been dropped in the Senate. It is now Senate Bill 751, so that is there. You can see from these lists the status of each, and we'll be updating those as we receive updates as well. I think the alternative certification bill, Senate Bill 635 and House Bill 790, will be before the Senate Committee on March 11th for testimony, and I think Dr. Wilcox will be traveling to Annapolis to testify at that one. There's also been several pieces of legislation that we've been asked to give some fiscal notes on, and Mr. Trotta, I don't know if you'd want to just briefly talk about the Senate Bill 627, the Maintenance of Effort, which may be very problematic if it gets oxygen in Annapolis.
Yes, this bill is entitled "Education: Maintenance of Effort Requirement Alterations." And this is a bill that if it's passed would have significant financial implications across the state of Maryland. Staff is currently looking at this particular bill as, the way the Maintenance of Effort is now structured, after they calculate each local board's allocation, there's then a multiplier of 2.5% that they apply to that final number. This bill is indicating that that 2.5% should not be allocated going forward. Now, this has implications not only for the amount of money that the state allocates to local boards of education, but also every local government across the state would see its allocation reduced by 2.5%. So we're currently calculating with that, what the implications would be for our school system. I have received some preliminary numbers. We certainly will share that with you once we've completed our review, but I would just tell you, it's significant, would have significant implications, not only for our county, but, but across the entire state of Maryland. So we'll be watching this very, very carefully.
Thank you. I would like to just give a little bit of feedback. I know there's been a couple articles and letters about the post-Labor Day legislation, and we had asked staff to give us an idea of what that might look like here in Washington County. Basically, if that passes this coming year, school would start on September 8th, which is 13 student days later than currently scheduled. School would end for students, assuming no snow days, and we know how that's worked the last few years, on approximately June 17th, adding about 13 student days there. With snow days, and if we just say five, and that I think would be best-case scenario, we would not, our last day of school would be June 24th. And if you look at graduation, those dates would be moved at least one to two weeks later into June as well. You're looking at marking period dates would change. Other adjustments might include professional days for staff, consideration of attending school on the day before Thanksgiving, union contract languages would also possibly need to be changed. So what appears to be very simple is very complex, and I would say that's why we, as a board, the last two years and continue to oppose that legislation. Just one short other comment, there's been some concern in the county that our legislative initiatives and platform have not been discussed in the public venue, and I'd like to remind everyone that we started under policy BJ in October 7th of last year to develop our core values, to look at our legislative platform. October 21st, we discussed legislative priorities for this session. Also, on October 21st, we approved two motions about the Legislative Response Team and the appointment of the legislative representative. Those were all supported by seven-zero votes. November 4th, we approved the 2015 legislative priorities, again, in an all-in-public session, seven-zero vote. December 9th, at a business meeting, we approved all three innovative initiatives. The pre-kindergarten has since been dropped, but the private financing and local certification for critical shortages, and those were supported seven to zero. That same evening, we met jointly, again, in a public session with our delegation to discuss all of these initiatives. And then again, on January 6th, in a business meeting, we approved the introduction of another local initiative, the legislation to amend 4201 of the education article with a six-one vote, or a super- a six-one vote or a supermajority. So that pretty much concludes our legislative report at this time, and we are moving on to the next consideration, unless someone else has any other committees they'd like to report on. So we're now moving to the establishment of an ad hoc committee on board communications. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Under Policy BDF and Regulations BDFR, Advisory Committees to the Board of Education, I have requested and placed a charge before you and would seek a motion so we can then have discussion.
Madam President, I move for the establishment of an ad hoc committee on board communications to be chaired by Mrs. Fisher and the other members, to include Mrs. Harshman and Mrs. Williams. The name of the committee will be the Ad Hoc Committee on Board Communications.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second if I'm allowed to, since I'm named in it.
I think that's perfectly fine.
I'll second then.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Yes, Mr. Ridenhour.
Yes. Just to make certain and understand my vote, what my vote will be, I believe that this committee is a little redundant. We do have practices and guidelines in our board norms in regards to board member communications, and I think it is a little redundant and unnecessary, so I won't be voting to support.
Very good. Any other discussion? Since I'm putting this forward, I will speak to the thought process I had regarding this. I think I saw this as a way of reviewing past practice, our policies, our guidelines, our board norms in relation to internal communication as well as external communication, how we as board members communicate with each other via email, what is considered appropriate or inappropriate under the Open Meetings Act, what things that are discussed in closed session can then not or can be discussed in emails, personnel discussions that can and cannot be held, just a way of, a guideline so that we're all on the same page. We're a new board. We've just been together since December, and I think it's important that we all learn how to play well together. And communication, I think, is one of the more difficult activities that any group has to deal with, and I think this gives us an opportunity to come together on some of these guidelines. Also, when employees approach us as individual board members, how protocol dictates that we respond to those. So that was my, my thinking, and I leave it to the judgment of my colleagues as to whether this goes forward or not. Any further discussion? The question is on Dr. Harding's motion to approve the establishment of an ad hoc committee on board communications. All those in favor, please signify. Looks like we have six. All those opposed?
Five.
Five, excuse me. Two opposed. Very good. It will pass, and Mrs. Fisher is chair. You'll move forward and start setting up some meeting times.
Just as soon as Dr. Wilcox lets us know who our staff liaison is.
And I'm sure he'll get with you on that. Thank you very much, and I appreciate my colleagues' willingness to move forward with this. All right, we are now into future agenda items. Just to let everyone know that on March 10th, we will be having a public hearing in the auditorium. We'll be hearing from our Budget Advocacy and Review Committee, and Dr. Wilcox will present the board's proposed FY 2016 general fund budget. If we need an additional work session following that, that'll be on March 17th. Our next joint meeting with the county commissioners will be on March 24th. Other than that, I think we'll move on to board member comments, and Mrs. Harshman?
No comment.
Mrs. Williams?
No comment.
Mr. Gessford?
Nothing.
Mrs. Fisher?
It's been a long day. Nothing.
Oh, my gosh. Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing at this time.
Back to Dr. Harding's.
Just going to report on two meetings that I attended so that all my colleagues are aware. I did attend the Washington County reception that was held in Annapolis. It happened to be the same day I was testifying on one of those bills. Thanks to the Washington County Technical High School, again, as they do just about every year, I think they really stole the show. They put them right up in front, so when they walk in, all the senators' delegates from around the state are met with students who can, in the cybersecurity program and the biotech program, just warned them all as they walked in to watch their phone password because those kids are smart and they, I'm sure they wouldn't do it, but I'll bet they could if you asked them to. So that was a great event, and thanks for the support from Dr. Wilcox and the school system for showcasing the great things that are going on in Washington County. The second event is Dr. Lowry visited the STEM Middle College last Friday, and at her invitation, at her request, to have Mrs. Brightman and I there with Dr. Wilcox. I, of course, attended. It was great to see her there with such enthusiasm for the creative things that we're doing in Washington County to create new opportunities for students. The students all spoke, talked about what they're interested in. They are bright, intelligent, young people who are really driven and motivated, who have found a unique way, a unique educational opportunity that for many of them just clearly fits them. So it made, made me feel good about what we've done to create that program and look forward to creating more opportunities like that for our kids.
Very good, thank you. I have no comments this evening. Dr. Wilcox, anything you'd like to, thoughts, wisdom you'd like to leave us with?
No, I've enjoyed my day with you.
And I've enjoyed the day as well. We've come to the end of our business, and we are adjourned.